Ready Bill? Okay, good evening. This is the December first special meeting of the Town of Tremble Retirement Board. We have one item on the agenda, which is to get some input from our Bern, our investment consultant. So I would like to turn and since we have a forum, I'd like to turn the meeting over to John Oliver and let him take the lead on this.
Yeah, thanks everyone. And you know, thanks Jim for the, you know, all the work you do for the board. I appreciate everyone's time tonight because I know it was a little bit short notice, but I thought it was a unique opportunity. We should discuss one way or the other. And I think there's going to be, you know, by the end of the discussion, kind of four different options we'll discuss. One is we talked about allocating some more capital to Boyd between the GSA fund and also the state fund. So, you know, two things with that, we need to figure out how we can make some room within our policy because our policy is capped at about 10 in the inflation protected securities. So, you know, we'll probably have to think about that. That's one potential option to increase the capital there. The second thing we'll think about, I was, I was out in Cleveland at the Boyd offices and it was really warm out there. It was just like Miami or something, you know, it was when I was out there with, with the team there, it would have to be 20 degrees colder, but it's pretty cold here now. So I had a great meeting with with Jack and also Brian Jeffrey, the CEO of the firm about really a kind of a new, a couple of new investment ideas and products they're working on. And I know we've, they've had great success with the GSA fund and also the state fund. You know, one of the problems with having that great success is there's a very long queue to get into the funds. So we had talked about allocating allocating some funds to them. The only problem is I believe the, the date would be the end of October next year. Those, I knew you guys at Boyd could speak that off the top of my head. I think it would be almost a year to get any capital to get in the front of the line at the queue. For both the state, I mean, the state might be a little sooner than that. And actually the GSA might be in December next year. So as I was speaking with Jack and Brian out there, out there, you know, one of the natural things they had looked at with this government and quasi-government or government real estate, whether it's federal, GSA or state, one of the things they had been working on is, is I would, I'll call it, I don't want to take too much away from them. But really what I would consider mission critical quasi-government space, which I think actually has some more unique characteristics than even the GSA fund and possibly even the state fund in that there, there's some higher return profile and potentially I would say a less risk profile. And I don't want to get into that too much because I want them to speak to that a little bit more. And I thought that you know, we can either make a decision on waiting in the queue for the GSA and the state fund. But I thought this could be a great opportunity to have something that has maybe an equal risk profile, but a higher return profile without the wait. So, you know, this is something we can consider doing or vote on doing tonight or not doing, or we could do the GSA and state. But I, you know, I certainly wanted to give an opportunity to present this option from them because I think it's something in the space that they're operating in that's unique to the marketplace, number one. And it also gives us an ability when we're looking at pretty high valuations and equities, I think, whether you're talking about historically or relatively or in a lot of other ways, if you're doing it in a kind of comparative way and piecing out the equity markets, but that doesn't matter because equities have extreme volatility. So we can have up markets and equities, but also some of the challenging aspects of the fixed income market. And the majority of the assets in this fund are in, you know, equities and fixed income. So I thought this was a unique opportunity to look at this, to diversify potentially. And then also, you know, work with a firm we know who has, I think, a product that's going to be launched that, that'll be pretty interesting for the marketplace. So with, with all that being said, I'll turn it over to the Boyd team. And they can go through their presentation and we can see if this is something that, you know, makes sense for us. And if it doesn't, we certainly, we don't have to move in that direction. But I thought it's something that is would be pretty appropriate for the pension fund and not push us out really any farther on the risk curve. So.
Can I just add one thing, just administratively? Sorry, Jim, I didn't mean to interrupt you. We, the paperwork deadline for the GSA and state to add those additional funds was today. So we worked with the Boyd team and they were willing to give us a little time to make a decision by, we have to give them an answer by tomorrow morning. So I just wanted to let you all know that before they began to speak.
And one quick question, how much are you recommending that we invest?
I would, I would say at a minute, if we do the, this new fund, I would say at minimum a million to meet the fee threshold, but, but I think it'd be probably more appropriate to look at some number between a million and a half and 2 million.
Okay.
So, you know, not, not something that's too extensive, but I think, and, and I, and as I was saying before, there's, there's different ways to do it. We could actually reduce the exposure in the GSA and add to this, but I, I also thought probably an appropriate measure to consider would be increasing kind of our ability to go past 10% in this particular sleeve. But you know, with that being said, we, we do have a bit of real estate exposure, but it's, it's really unique real estate exposure. So I don't think it's something that's you know, for example, putting all our money in, you know, the REIT Vanguard Fund or something like that. I think there's such unique characteristics to this that it's pretty diversified. So these are kind of some things we could talk about after their presentation, if it makes sense.
Great.
Take it, take it away.
All right, Jack, you want to put the presentation on screen?
Sure. Let me pull it up.
Cue heroes, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Everyone able to see slides?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Perfect. Well, J O and Lindsay, thank you for the introduction and to the board, first and foremost, thank you for your business. Already currently being a GSA as well as state fund investor. Aggregate of roughly 3 million between both strategies. Casey and I were really excited about the new, the new strategy, the diversified government REIT. So just to give you a very briefly, a refresher, reacquaint you with Boyd, who we are, what we do. Now I'll turn it over to Casey to discuss this strategy. Boyd, we're the largest landlord to the federal government by a factor of two. And really we're the only investment manager with a national practice focused on buying state and local government real estate. And with the diversified government REIT, we believe that this is a non-correlating real estate strategy with a return target of eight to 10% net total over the real estate cycle. So if we just get started in the book on page one, Boyd, we're $17 billion boutique investment manager. We manage capital on behalf of a lot of public funds, pension funds, as well as a handful of individuals. We now have 120 employees throughout six offices. Casey Wendellin is a portfolio manager for real estate as well as the steward of our Chicago office. I'm located in our Cleveland headquarters and deal more so on the client servicing and marketing side. Assets under management, you can see we're split fairly evenly between real estate and fixed income. We expect to be at roughly 10 billion at year end in the next few weeks or so here. Few key executives in the interest of time. If you can see Steve Perry about center of the page, Steve is a former head of the GSA. He was appointed under George W. Bush as well as Tim Horn on the right side of the page. Tim oversaw the transition between the Obama administration as well as the Trump administration. And these two individuals bring to us expertise in dealing with government real estate. As I mentioned, Casey Wendellin in the center of the page, being the portfolio manager of the strategy. We continue to build out our real estate team as demand for the product has grown. Sorry. And as you can see, our, our real estate, demand for our real estate products has continued to grow. We opened our real estate practice in October of 2013. And as John, John Oliver alluded to, our queues have, are currently robust. We had to implement investor queues due to such high demand for an income generating strategy. And the GSA funds currently at roughly 600 or so million dollars and the state fund is at roughly 800 million dollars. And with that, I'll turn it over to Casey Wendellin.
Yeah, thanks, Jack. And as Jack mentioned, I'm a portfolio manager on this product. I work on the GSA fund, but I'm, I'm moving over to be primarily the co-lead on this new product, the diversified government REIT. With Brian Conbury, who was our newly named CIO, he was deputy CIO before for the firm. So I've been with the firm for 12 years and I've worked in basically every capacity you can within the real estate group. I was the second employee at Boyd in the real estate team. So I've, I've been through the wringer. So you're all fairly familiar, I think, with our government lease strategies. And while we were looking at deals for, for those strategies, we were coming across a lot of opportunities that we weren't really able to capitalize upon in the government contractor space, as well as sometimes we were over allocated to say a geography or a federal agency or a state in the state fund and that we couldn't invest in those. And so what we decided to do was create this fund, which is really an extension of those two funds that we can capture those opportunities that we were having to take a pass on previously. So diversified government REIT offers the opportunity to invest in properties that support critical government missions. The properties are leased primarily to quasi-government tenants. And to a lesser extent, we will own some federal, state and local government agencies. And the fund even has the ability to, to invest in Canadian assets, but that's going to be a very minor portion of the strategy, if, if a portion of the strategy at all. We're still doing research on the Canadian space, but we wanted to leave that opportunity available. We feel good about it in the future. The funds has similar characteristics as the GSA and state funds that provide steady income stream. We're going to be focused on built a suit and competitively positioned properties with tenants that are providing mission critical services. That's our, they're sponsored through federal, state, and local government agencies. We're going to be targeting specialized properties that have long-term leases in place that make them likely to renew. These are generally going to be pretty sticky tenants. And we're going to construct a really well diversified portfolio, much like we do in our other funds by geography, mission, tenant, lease maturity, debt maturity. The, the return on this fund will be eight to 10% net total return primarily coming from income over the course of the cycle. And we think like our other strategies, it's going to be a low volatility and low correlation fund. What I would say is this fund is going to offer a slightly higher return than our other two vehicles with slightly more risk because you don't have quite the credit of the, of the federal and state government. But we do think there are other characteristics such as more diversification that's possible with a variety of tenants rather than a single type of tenant. That may bring down that risk a little bit as well. That's different than our other two funds. Jack already took you through the company a little bit, so I'll skip the section on the manager there, but a few differences between our diversified government REIT and the other two funds are that we have an investment minimum of 250K in this vehicle with a fee break above 1 million. Also, this has been geared towards both high net worth individuals as well as institutions. The other funds are really geared more towards institutional investors. And so we're offering, this will have a 1099 tax form instead of a a K1 form that comes with our other funds. This also offered the opportunity potentially for tax deferred exchanges. We get a number of investors who come to us have assets to sell and say, you know, I don't know where to put my money afterwards. Here they can sell an asset to us and put their money straight into the fund and get a much more diversified portfolio immediately and it'll be a tax deferred exchange. Otherwise, the structure of the fund is largely the same. It's open-ended in structure and we have quarterly distributions, quarterly liquidity, et cetera. I'm going to go to the next slide, Jack. And can everybody hear me? Okay. Is there an echo or anything? Okay. So some of the highlights, the credit quality in this will be slightly lesser than in our GSA state lease strategy for the quasi-government agencies we have. We will give preference to higher quality investment grade tenants. But it's not the federal government, right? It's, it's going to be federal government contract backed for the most part. But you won't have the government on the lease. But still it's very high quality credit and all this will be, like I said, backed by a fund, funded by the government or backed by a government contract. And then we will have GSA and state lease assets as well. In terms of longevity of tenancy, we think this is very similar, if not more so. Tents are going to be in place for a long period of time. A lot of these contractors have really highly specialized buildings for what they're working on, and these are long-term contracts. And we just think the probability renewal for these is really high. Sometimes they, these tenants have what we call SCIF space, what the government calls SCIF space, which are sensitive. Compartmentalized information facilities is what SCIF stands for. And this is where if you want to have secure communications with a senator, you are going to do it in a SCIF space, or if you are talking about highly sensitive details about Defense Department issues, you're going to, you're going to be in a SCIF space and these are not readily available just in the marketplace. You can't just go move into a SCIF space. They cost about 300 bucks a foot to, to build out. So they're highly expensive and once you have them, they have to be approved by the government. And it's very long approval process. And so you don't want to move from your SCIF space once you are in there. So it's highly unlikely, once you're in a space, that they're going to move unless they are forced to do so. So we are going to be focusing on these highly specialized buildings primarily or buildings that are geographically sensitive to where they are next to national labs, next to army bases, military bases. Those are the types of buildings we're going to be looking for. And then we're going to, of course, build out a very diversified portfolio. Sometimes some of these buildings, because they have such specialized, a little bit of buyback outcome, we can reduce that risk by diversifying and not having concentration in single assets. So if you want to go to the next slide, Jack. So what is quasi-government? What, what is that? We define it as properties that have a nexus or connection to the government through either proximity to the government, funding from the government, mission criticality. There could be other factors as well. This is largely going to be government contractors. Government-funded not-for-profits could be public institutions like colleges or public hospital systems. There's going to be a little bit of a gray area as to what is a government, quasi-government tenant. But as long as there is a demonstrable nexus, in our opinion, we are going to feel that it's investable. A lot of the highest priority and fastest growing government initiatives like cybersecurity, clean energy, healthcare, biotech. Those are basically all outsourced to government contractors. And so those, that's where a lot of the dollars are flowing within the federal government. And we think this is a great space to be. And we think that this space is also equal to or greater than the combined federal, state and local government opportunity set. There's just a lot more contractors out there and government-funded agencies than, than you realize. And it's a much bigger leased space than the government itself. Then we think we are uniquely qualified to evaluate these types of properties because we have such deep government real estate experience as well as the fixed income side of our business, which has great fundamental credit research capabilities as well. So if you go to the next slide, so some types of quasi-government properties. We're going to be a little bit more diversified in terms of asset classes as well. Our GSA and state funds are largely in office space, mostly specialized office space. We think that the quasi-government opportunity is going to be not only in specialized office space, but it's going to be in lab space, industrial, medical office, data centers. There could be even multifamily space, we think could potentially be a quasi-government opportunity, especially on military bases. Sometimes the government funds the rent payments for tenants there. And so if we saw an opportunity there, we may even invest in multifamily. So in some of these spaces, if you're probably aware, industrial lab space, flex space, this has been really hot, commercial real estate with really strong rent growth. Medical office in that same category as well. In a lot of those cases, it's really hard to do remote work from a lab, for instance. Or if you're working on highly specialized Defense Department contracts, you're going to have to be in your space. People don't want that sensitive information brought home with them. Where it could be at risk to lose a computer or something of that sorts. If you go to the next slide. The mission for quasi-government, as I mentioned, where we're seeing a lot of growth is cybersecurity, healthcare, life sciences, defense, energy research. That's where the money is flowing within the government. You can see health and human services, they're funding between 19 and 20, 34%. And that's largely due to COVID, but COVID is, does not appear to be going away. And there's a lot of money that's going to go into CDC, FDA, NIH funding, et cetera. Department of Defense is up 14% year over year and with some escalating tensions globally. We think that that's going to continue to be a growth area. Department of Energy also a growth area. There's going to be a lot of climate work in that area as well as working on alternative energy sources. And a lot of that, 80% of the budget, the Department of Energy is outsourced and about 50% of the Department of Defense. And then homeland security as well is growing. And so those are agencies that we think are, not only are they getting increased funding, but they're really hard to do those jobs remotely. If you could go to the next slide. The government acts countercyclically. And this is a selling point for both our GSA and state funds as well. But you can see what happened to funding during the last two recessions. You've seen government stimulus with lots of funding going out. That usually means more people working in government, more people means more real estate and therefore they'll be leasing more space. And a lot of this money is going to contractors. It's not necessarily going to government agencies. Good. Go to the next slide. So some of the locations we see strategically that are maybe not necessarily major markets from a city perspective, but where we see a lot of opportunities in the contractor space are near national laboratories, near life science clusters, near military bases, clusters where there's cybersecurity. So for instance, we are under contract to buy a building in Idaho that is next to a national lab, it's leased to Batel, which is a government contractor. They are working very closely with the national lab there, have a contract in place. They've been there for 15 plus years. And we would expect they're going to be there for a long, long time because that lab's not going anywhere. And as you can imagine, in Idaho, they're in Idaho Falls is where it's located. There aren't tons of other buildings for them to move to, especially that would have the security that they need. So we feel pretty confident about renewal story at those locations, really sticky tenants. And we have a few other examples there, you know, life science clusters, for instance, in Boston, in San Diego, Raleigh-Durham. Those are going to be targets of ours as well as large US bases. We have Redstone Arsenal listed there. That's in Huntsville, Alabama. That's a really heavy government contractor market and it's a, they have really low vacancy rates in those markets and strong rent growth. So we feel really good about those. If you want to go to the next slide. So what are we looking for? We're looking for both strong markets as well as mission criticality or asset specialization. So in the top left corner here, you can see we looked at a building leased to Raytheon. It was just a little bit before we had this fund run, ready to go. So we couldn't capitalize on it, but that was a highly secure building. The whole building was SCIF space. They had dark fiber that ran onto a military base. They were working on top secret government contracts for the military. It's a highly specialized asset, Raytheon's A-rated credit. There was little chance that they were ever going to move from that location. It was a newly built building. That would be, it was in the Dolls Tech Quarter in Portor as well. So in suburban DC, which is a really hot area for contractors, that would have been right in our wheelhouse to purchase. On the other hand, we have other assets though that are, are really attractive to us. So especially if they have high mission criticality. So on the lower left is the Idaho building that we have under contract to buy. Even though that's a small market, it might not be our number one target for a market. It is a really highly specialized building. And so it's mission critical. We don't think they're going anywhere. So we feel pretty confident about that building. Likewise, we've seen some attractive buildings in a market like Salt Lake City that are publicly funded, a public to funder, which is government funded, but is not a government agency. Even though that's not the most secure or mission critical function in terms of specialization in a property. It is government funded. They had a long-term lease in place and it's essentially quasi-government. You can think of it as a government agency. And so we felt pretty good about that as well. We would take a pass on it since if they don't have a strong mission critical story, or if they are not really in an attractive market. If you want to go to the next slide, Jack, here are some of our targeted markets beyond what we showed on that map. And most of these are in the Sunbelt or the Mountain West, high growth areas where there's a lot of tech growth, a lot of cybersecurity. None of these markets would really surprise you if you follow the real estate investing at all. This is where the growth in the country is occurring. And so thus you're seeing growth in office usage in those markets. Now if you go to the next slide. We talked about the government or the, the investment universe here. Primarily, this is going to be quasi-government leased, but we will have some GSA, state, local governments. And as I mentioned earlier, we do have the opportunity to do Canadian. If I had to guess though, we think about 80, 20 of our government investment in this space is going to be quasi-government. And I think it's important to note that our GSA and state funds, this fund will not be stealing deals from the GSA and state fund. And they're also not going to be taking the leftovers from the GSA and state fund. They're only going to be investing in GSA or state or local government deals where the other funds could not invest because of allocation issues or concentration issues. Or we've had issues where a building is maybe half leased to the state government and half leased to the GSA government. It doesn't really fit either of our funds, but would fit perfectly within this diversified fund. So this isn't going to be a first fund in case that was something you were wondering about. If you go to the next slide. Just a comparison with core real estate, this is very similar slide we have in our GSA and state funds. Except for our property focus is a little wider in this fund. We'll look a little bit more like a core fund in terms of property types. But we'll probably still be mostly specialized office. I think that will be the majority of our investment in this fund. We will be in a diverse set of markets, more so than a core fund. Our return objectives are more income oriented than a core fund. Our targeted net total return of eight to 10%. If you look at core returns over a long period of time, they're about 7%. So if we're able to hit our eight to 10, we would outperform core in the long term. Our credit is going to be federal, state, and local government or federal government backed entities. Which obviously is stronger credit than your typical core fund. And we think our renewal rates in this space will be about 75% or higher. Government, within the government space, we see 80% plus. We think with our knowledge of government tenancy, that we can probably elevate that into the 80 or 90% range on the renewal rates. Typical core funds more like 60, 65%. It's historic renewal rates. So we think we will have higher renewals and stickier tenants in this space.
A question for you. So if these are probably better credits than core, why is the income higher or the return, total return expected to be three to 4% higher than core?
Yeah, well, there's a couple of factors at play there. One, we have a little bit higher leverage than core. This fund is going to be in the pride of 45% range. Core funds tend to be in the 20 to 30% range. So we generate more income in that way. Two, we're buying a little bit higher cap rates generally in this space than a core fund. If you're buying a core fund, you're buying it like, probably like a four cap for a multifamily asset or an industrial asset. We're buying it probably a six and a half to 7% average cap rate in this sector. So that's, that's a big factor as well. And core funds probably will do a little bit more development than we would do. And so that has a little bit of a drag on current income for core funds. It is more appreciation focused. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, it sounds quite attractive. Seems like, you know, it's really a better credit in many ways and yet higher expected return.
Yeah. And you are taking a little bit more risk with leverage, but we think that this type of credit can handle higher leverage without any problem. And we don't have to worry about missed rep payments like you would in maybe a core fund where you'd be a little bit more cautious perhaps.
Yeah, Casey, just on Jim's point and your point about the credits, what I think is probably unique too to this fund versus the GSA. You know, if there's a dispute in the GSA fund and, you know, the government wants to move the building, it's probably not going to be the most attractive proposition and then go sue the federal government when you're running a GSA fund. Whereas if there's an issue with Raytheon, it'd probably be a little easier if there was an issue with the credit. So, so there is a little you, not that you guys wouldn't, I just mean more of the point, like when I was speaking with Brian, that there's, you know, some of the credits in the portfolio would probably be easier to collect if there was a disagreement or dispute from when you're dealing with, you know, Raytheon, or you're dealing with Boeing or something like that as opposed to, you know, I don't know. The headline is suing like the local judicial, you know, state. The headline risk suing like the local judicial, you know, state thing probably doesn't look great, right?
Yes, I do think the government is probably the most difficult tenant to deal with. And so dealing with. A corporate entity is just going to be a little bit easier. We're going to have more disparate. Entities we're dealing with. And so we won't have that concentration with one entity like we have with the federal government and say the GSA fund. So there is a.
Another question, if you don't mind me. So typically this fund would buy. A building and then it would be an initial ten year lease or would you have expiring leases already on the building? In the building?
The building would already be leased, much like in our GSA or state funds, but it'll have varying terms depending on when in the cycle we bought it. A lot of times developers will develop a brand new building. They've leased it to Raytheon, for example. And they say, okay, now is the best time for me to sell because I'm selling with the best term on it. And so a lot of the buildings come out with like ten year terms or. You know, somewhere in the seven to fifteen year range is generally where we're buying. That's not to say we would never buy a shorter leased term building because. If we think there's a great story there, we can buy it at a more attractive cap rate and. Juice our returns a little bit. And that's where the research piece comes in is really understanding what are they doing in the? In the building? Is it a mission critical function? Is there any chance they're going to leave? And if we really think that there's no chance they're going to leave, we might. Invest in a shorter term leased asset, but mostly we're probably going to be in the six to seven year weighted average term in our portfolio. That's where our GSA and state funds. Tend to hover in that range.
And are these typically net leases where you don't have to worry about maintenance and things like that?
That's, that's an important point. So as opposed to the state and GSA funds. I wouldn't say most, but a lot of these leases are net leases or triple net even in a few cases. You know, it's going to be all over the map, but yes, I think more of these are net leased than we will see in either the other two funds, which reduces our capital expenditures to the properties, which means we can boost our dividend a little bit. So that's an important point.
And then the big risk is that the tenant does not renew and what happens then?
Yeah, well, we want to be in locations that are. In demand, right? So either next to important locations like bases and national labs. So let's say we had a lease with Raytheon and it was right next to. You know, where they're manufacturing a missile for the government. Whoever gets that next contract is probably going to slide in. If Raytheon lost the contract for some reason. Whoever gets that next contract is going to slide right into our space because there's just not SKIF space available for those tenants. And so. If you just land at a contract and you need somewhere quickly to go, it's going to take a long time to build up SKIF space and hey, we've got a building ready to go. So we've experienced that in the GSA fund where we've had a couple of SKIF spaces that vacated. And we've backfilled it, I mean, immediately, like not one day has gone by without a rent payment on that building.
And how long do you think it'll take to ramp up this fund since you're acquiring new assets? Will there be a ramp up period where returns are lower?
Well, I think we are doing everything we can to not have much of a J curve. And, and to hit returns right away. And so. We are closing on our first building December fifteenth. We're calling that capital December fourteenth. And so we're going to have. Income coming in from day one on that. We've also got a hundred million dollar credit line lined up that will help maintain our leverage. In the early stages, that's oftentimes the dance we have to do is. Managing equity and debt in the early stage of the fund. That credit line will really allow us to maintain our desired leverage ratio early on. And so we think we are going to minimize any sort of J curve on this particular fund.
And maybe I'm coming ahead a little here, but I guess you have a pretty good handle on what the size, initial size of the fund it will be and then being open ended. It can grow, but I guess it could shrink over time. Could you comment on those things?
Yeah, well, we do have a two year lockup on this fund, which we do on the other. So. I don't think we have to worry about shrinking, at least not in the first two years. And by then I think we will be at a critical mass size. We have twenty million dollars that we're calling December fifteenth for this first closing. January one, we are hoping we have about twenty million lined up right now, possibly more. To call up January one for some deals. And then we think by April one that we could easily be over a hundred million raised.
And what's the total size of commitments?
Right now it's about forty million.
So you're still. You're expecting this to be a hundred million plus.
Literally, we literally finalized our documents about a week and a half ago. So. We have not been able to market to investors until now.
So just getting in on the very first cap call, I guess, is what the deadline is about for tomorrow, but it will. Still be open beyond that time.
Yes, yes.
That's for a GSA and state. So if we wanted to enter the queue and get optimal position for GSA and state, we have to get those docs.
It's not a deadline tomorrow.
Correct.
Yeah, right. Not for this one.
Gotcha. Thank you. All right. I'll stop asking questions for a while.
Yeah, no questions. Jack, do you want to go to the next slide? We just have, you know, in the interest of time, I'll kind of skip over these, but these are just some examples of, of properties. The one on the left is the one we have under contract that we're closing on. In about a week and a half. And. Like I said, we think that's a really highly secure asset that they're not going anywhere. We toured it. Tim Horn, who is our. Government expert in-house that used to run the GSA was like, there is no chance that they're going anywhere. So we feel really good about that building. And then the building on the right is just an example. That's a medical office building, lab. At least to University of California system. That would be an example of a type of, of. Public institution leased building that we might buy in the future. We don't have that building under contract right now, but it has been on the market. So just as an example, next slide, Jack. It's two more examples. So these are actually buildings we own in our other funds that are examples of the types of assets that one on the left is. Florida tax collector, believe it or not, the tax collector is not a government agency. It is government funded. But the state of Florida is not on the lease. So, you know, it is. Not technically a state leased building. Likewise, on the right hand side, the public defender for Salt Lake County is government funded, but it's not a government. Entity itself. So we feel pretty good about those missions that those aren't going anywhere. And on the next slide, you can see just a couple of examples of industrial buildings. What we're not looking for in this fund is. Say a generic office building leased. You see Honeywell as the tenant there. We just saw Honeywell's headquarters in Charlotte hit the market. And we were talking internally that a building we would want to look at. But it doesn't have any specialization. It's just generic office building that happens to be leased to a contractor. That's not really what we're looking for in this fund. We're looking for a specialized building that. Has a specific need for the government in a specific location and makes it difficult for them to leave. You go to the next slide. Jack, and I'll try to wrap this up in the next five minutes. This is just the math on how we get to our returns. You know, we're buying roughly a six and a half average cap rate. And with leverage in place at around forty-five to fifty percent, that's how we can generate a, you know, eight to ten percent return. And. I won't take you through the math in detail, but. And someone asked earlier about the levered core funds. They're, they're buying it on average of four point three percent cap. And so you can see the numbers as to how we got to their expected returns there. Here the next slide, we'll just summarize. So why does it make sense to invest in this REIT? Long story short, we think this is a great area to invest in and we think we're the best qualified for doing so. It's really an extension of what we already do and you're familiar with our. Knowledge in the government lease space. We offer an opportunity for high stable income stream, much like our other funds. It's an open ended structure. So you have liquidity. And you can also get in with additional investments. And right now, as you've noted, there's no weight to get into this fund and it could be a year or more into our other funds. Generally speaking, we're going to look for an eight to ten percent return over the course of the cycle. And we think we can, that you from an investor standpoint could look at it as core real estate, a complement to core. Because it's not really going to be correlated with core very closely. At least in our experience, there are other funds that's been the case. And other, some people look at our government lease funds as alternative to fixed incomes. And so I think this has very similar characteristics as well. And then it's also suitable for institutional and other accredited investors. And then on the term sheet, I'll just mention on the next page. I did mention the minimum for two hundred and fifty thousand for REIT two. It's a million dollars for REIT one. It's, it's a twenty-five basis discount if you're in that. Million and up bracket. So it's one point two five percent. And for that first year, twenty twenty-two, it's only going to be one percent. So there's twenty-five percent discount. Jim to, to account for maybe a little bit of J curve within that first year. There is a two year lockup, as I mentioned, and. I think that's, that pretty much summarizes everything that we wanted to talk about. Are there any other questions?
Well, it's, I'm sure. Not what you would. Agree with, but sometimes if in an open funded fund like this, it makes sense, you know, to wait. For six months or something to get through that J curve. Can you? Discuss the alternative of waiting and being a later investor?
Well, you certainly can. It's, it's up to your. Your prerogative, obviously, but I don't know where you have the money that would go into this fund today. Certainly in the fixed income markets, you're going to generate significantly less. Than this fund would, even if there is a little bit of a ramp up period. And if you have to wait a year to get into our other funds or more. You would have, you know, given up the, the return that you're going to make in this fund during that timeframe. So. You know, it's really. Opportunity cost is the way I would look at it.
You know, what I sort of thought you might say is there's a chance this fund might get oversubscribed at some point as well.
Well, that is absolutely a possibility. That is. We do think there's going to be demand. We are seeing a really big opportunity set for investments. So I do think. For this first year or two, that we are going to see enough. Enough places to put the money, let's put it that way, that we're not going to be hurting for opportunities to invest in. And so.
So what, what's your best estimate of what the total return would be over the first year?
I mean, I think we, we think we can hit that eight to ten percent range. You know, is it possible, you know, more like six or seven? Sure, that's possible, but. But we think we are set up to manage this as well as, as can be done with our credit line. And with the equity that we have available as well as the opportunities. We're going to try to avoid cash drag as much as possible. That's the real difficulty early on. And so we're trying to set up our deals to close. Very early in the quarter when we call the capital. So that we're not sitting around on a pile of cash during the quarter waiting to invest.
And if we committed now, how likely, how long would it likely take before all of our commitment was called?
I think it would be called January one.
The full commitment?
Most likely, yes.
Okay. Great. I think it sounds very attractive.
Thanks, guys. Unless you have, does anyone have any other questions for the boy team? We can. Let them hop off and then we all could have a discussion.
I have no questions.
Thanks, guys. Really appreciate it.
All right. Thanks, everybody. We appreciate the opportunity and thank you for meeting existing investors in our other funds.
Yes, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, I think this sounds great. You know, I guess you're bumping up against the ten percent.
Yeah, I'll share.
Really be considered. Fixed income, I guess, but. Maybe we should consider it as a board to increase that alts allocation. Because personally, I think fixed income is challenged these days. And so. To the extent that we can divert some of that capacity. To things like this, you know, where we're getting more like a nine percent type of return instead of a four or five percent type return. I think it's attractive.
Yeah, I'll also say, you know, this is online but offline with the head of the firm. He thinks the return's going to be, once there is going to be more. In the very low teens potentially. So. You know, I think, I think they're being pretty modest. On the return front, but I know from the private conversation I had with him, he thought it would be a little, a little higher, but I'll say it so they don't have to.
Well, I personally, you know, kind of leave this up to Jim to decide whether it's an appropriate. Motion or not, but I, I would be inclined to make a motion to increase the. Inflation protection alternatives policy range up to as high as twenty percent instead of just ten.
Not okay. Do we have to downsize some other area though?
Yeah, that would allow us to move things out of even potentially equities, but more likely credit and fixed income. Into, you know, this to me. Is a little bit like credit, you know, even though we're buying real estate, you can think of it almost as a. A credit type investment. But it's just not qualified, classified to be that. But it's going to be lower, you know, volatility, lower risk than equities, obviously.
Are we assuming we're going to take, the, the last meeting, we talked about reducing the exposure to the Vanguard. Total bond market fund. Is that where you may be thinking of where we would, you know, move funds from to, to allocate to this?
Yeah, I mean, we're, you know, I, I would think the way we're positioned. Right now in terms of, you know, just say that the total equity target, we're, we're kind of right at our. You know, current target, maybe slightly over. You know, we are experiencing some volatility here for a multitude of reasons, but. You know, I, I just think when we're looking at, even though the duration has come way down and kind of a broad Barclays Ag or the total bond fund. I still think, you know, you could probably take some of the exposure from there and, you know, if there was something that. We saw that gave us an opportunity, we could take some of it from elsewhere. But, you know, my initial thought would be, you know. That you're kind of getting a nice trade off, I think, between. The risk and return of, you know, for lack of a better way to describe it, the vanilla chocolate strawberry bond market. And, you know, something where you're getting, you know, I, I would say effectively the same risk profile. You know, I, I don't know, maybe, maybe arguably less for risk profile with a higher return profile. So whenever you can shift assets. And that type of structure, I mean, you're trading off of some things, right? Like liquidity. But, you know, as I look at it, you, you're effectively swapping out of something that to me looks like. You know, as I mentioned before, you know, equities can do anything in the marketplace clearly, right? We've seen that. We've had, we've watched equities go up thirty plus percent. Go down thirty percent in a month, but you know, when we look at the fixed income market, especially just the long kind of. You know, investment grade credit market. I mean, it looks like a really challenging place to have assets if any, you know. Something bad happens, it's good to have it there. But, you know, I think we have enough things to offset. The, the risk of not having a huge corpus of assets there to, to be able to do something. Like this. You know, and if I, you know, if we really do kind of the, the math around it, which we've done behind the scenes, I mean. You know, historically on like a Vanguard total bond market, we're effectively taking a nine standard deviation risk if we take kind of the broad bar. Broad bond, bond market, excuse me, and you go back over, you know, a hundred years. But when you were taking that nine standard deviation risk, you were getting about a six. Percent coupon on average. So, you know, that doesn't mean we can't get a six percent return. In the kind of long only bond market or the vanilla chocolate strawberry bond market, for lack of a better way to put it, but it seems really tough. To, to be able to get that return, that historical return that we've gotten out of. Investment grade fixed income and then also have that same standard deviation. So, you know, I, I think this is, when I look at this as a trade off or risk return trade off, it, it, it makes a tremendous amount of sense. I don't know if that answered your.
I agree. I think that both Western asset and the Vanguard total bond market funds. Have a lot of interest rate risk right now. If rates go up, they're going to lose money as they have this year. So something like this to me would be more attractive.
Well, then Jim, maybe you can make a resolution proposal here.
I'd like to make the motion that we increase the. Range for alternatives and inflation protection. To as high as twenty percent instead of ten.
And can I get a second to that motion there?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion on it?
Yeah, Jim.
Yeah.
What is the, are we reducing something else? Are we just going to increase the ability to move things at the moment? What is the, are we reducing something else? Or are we just going to increase the ability to move things at the moment? Because I I actually have some concerns about this. I want to run by you guys after, but uh, I don't mind making some room. Um, I'm just not sure this is the place to put the money. So are we just making room? What are we doing with the motion?
Well, you know, you could maybe lower another range a little bit, but it's not absolutely necessary. You just have more flexibility to go higher on this one and lower on on one of the others.
I mean, I'm, you know, for myself, I'm not sure why. We um, we even have these ranges, right? I mean, they're they're sort of aspirational, I think, with us, but they might. And they should, I think, adjust as the market adjusts. So as as far as targets to give our advisors. I think they're a good idea.
Well, yeah. Yeah, uh, they're right now, we're just talking about a range.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any problem, you know, breaking the targets. It's, it's, you know, I think. I think there are more for our advisors than they are for us, right? Especially if we can just change them with emotion anytime. So. Uh, I don't have a problem doing it. I I, I'm not sure we should adjust anything else, and I'm not sure this is the investment for us, but. Uh, but I guess I don't have a problem changing the uh, the range.
Okay. Fair enough.
Uh, any more discussion? Well, can I have a vote? All in favor of supporting Jim's range? Say aye, aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Uh, motion carries. Thank you, Jim. But Anthony, I I kind of like to hear your thoughts on why you you might think this isn't the best investment for us.
Well. I, you know, oh, the only thing I know about it is what I saw in the PowerPoint that got forwarded around and this um. You know, I'm not familiar with it otherwise. If someone is, you know, I'd love to hear their thoughts on it. But as far as this goes, you know, if if I was looking, I was looking at the PowerPoint and. Trying to figure out what they're doing really with this and the PowerPoint. You know, the buildings that they have on here. With the exception of, I guess UC Davis is a, is technically a government entity, right? There's a tax collector on here, a public defender. The other buildings they have are all private companies with some, I'm sure, government contracts or government uh. You know, uh, ties. But, you know, I mean, a public defender, it's it's a law, right? I mean, the tax collector. I mean, you know, no offense to Donna, but it's an office. It's got people in it who who do, there's nothing special about the office space. As far as the, you know, I I tried to look up, I tried to do a little research on what the uh. Uh, with with the this secret space, I forget the acronym now for.
S C I F.
S C I, yeah. And I mean, it's, okay, it seems like that can be built pretty readily wherever you need to go. I'm sure the governments, especially, you know, if you're dealing with sensitive information. I mean, okay, granted, it's off Wikipedia was the main reference, but, you know, they're talking about. Temporary space and putting it on boats or in hotel rooms, sometimes private residences, if whenever you need a, you know, secure location, I guess. It it just doesn't seem, I I just think they're overplaying that. And the J curve Jim was talking about, I I'm, I'm not familiar with the term. I assume, Jim, you're talking about sort of the ramp up to when the money gets.
Yeah, it's what we're actually experiencing in our um, you know, uh, legal um.
Longford.
Yeah, Longford uh fund where we're um, you know, paying a lot of fees initially before the returns start coming in.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, and I I just, I mean, they they seem like they've got some targets and they're aspirational, but I I just don't see where. You know, maybe they are going to invest everything by January one, and we're going to start seeing returns February one. I I don't know, but. You know, and and it also bothers me a little bit that we've got this sort of emergency meeting when it's really not an emergency. Uh, it seems like we're going to have time if we want to think about it a little more and consider it. I I don't. I didn't really hear when Jim, you asked him, I didn't really hear what the rush was to put the money in.
Yeah, I think the deadline is getting in line for the other two funds.
Yeah, right. That's, yeah, the deadline is for the other funds. So like, if we want to do, you know, if we want to do this fund. You know, if if we decide to, great, if not, no problem. But, you know, if we're going to do the other funds, they have to get the paperwork tomorrow. So like, that's, that's more of the impetus to say. If we don't want to do, you know, I don't think we should move, you know, another, call it four million. Let's say we did two million in this fund. And then do another two million in the GSA and stay, I mean, I just think that would be overweighting too much to a single firm. So, you know, to me, as I, you know, our recommendation is, it's it's kind of an either or. So if it's one of the ors, that's the GSA in the state, then that's fine. We don't need to do this fund, but we need to submit the paperwork tomorrow or else, well. You know, what's the point of even kind of doing the other funds? Because well, we won't be in them until, you know, twenty twenty-three type thing. So that that was more the the decision point on it.
And Anthony, to your point, I think those are good points. They're the same kind of buildings, probably realistically, that are in the government fund. But there you have the government is the leasur, so let's see, or whatever the word term is. So they're obviously a much better credit than than a corporation would be. Although it's focused on, you know, mostly triple A or double A type credits.
Yeah, I mean, that, you know, UC Davis is going to pay its bills, the tax collector is going to pay its bills. That's the tenant itself. Focusing on tenants who are going to pay their bills, I think, is a good idea. I'm just not sure that the the. The way they're talking about the government being the tenant is anything more than a reduced credit risk. And I I'm, I I don't know, I just, I don't see the, what they're selling being. Sort of equivalent to what's on the page that I'm looking at. And I'm assuming, by the way, with that, it might be a little cynical, that what they put on the page. Is, are their best ones, right? The the six that they've given us are the most attractive ones. And if there are other ones they're looking at, that they are just not of the same. Whatever quality, maybe they're less uh, less obvious government. Entanglements or just um, you know, smaller for some reason, I just, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I think two of them on the page, they were saying were ones they would absolutely not do. And for example. The Honeywell headquarters was one they didn't do, even though it was an A credit, but to them, there is nothing uniquely special about. The real estate. So I think that was, you know, a couple of them were the points they were showing, you know, the the juxtaposing the ones they would do versus. Versus not do for, they were giving us examples of those. I think the specific one they used were the, was the page. Let me pull it up, that has Honeywell and someone else to the left on it.
Yeah, there's Honeywell and then there's the one that's uh C I C, S A I C. You know, I I did hear that with Honeywell now that you mention it. I'm not sure. It doesn't say that on this page, though, so maybe. I don't know. I I guess, I guess the bottom line is I'm just not convinced this is where we should be putting our money at this time. You know, if if I'm the only one, I will uh, I'll vote for it, but if if anybody else is sort of thinking the same way, I just wanted to put it out there.
Well, I had, I have a question now. Uh, of course, I didn't hear the discussion last, last meeting, but. Uh, certainly John Oliver, he needs some paperwork approved tonight uh, to to get into this funds. Do we have to also commit money tonight? Or can we hold off on that issue?
Oh, we don't have to commit to this font. No, 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 we don't have to commit to this font tonight, but I I I was just saying that, you know, if we don't do it. To this fund, then, you know, I think we should have a serious discussion on going into the GSA and state. And if that, you know, continues to make sense. To, you know, and if it does, we should absolutely be in the queue. I I just look at, I think, I think there's. You know, I maybe they didn't do a good job. I I think there's, you know, significantly more specialization in these buildings. And I think when they're using the term quasi-government, they're defining it as, you know, what's missing critical. For example, one of the things they're looking at is a cybersecurity building firm and the, and the, the firm has. The exclusive government contract for cyber security. So, you know, yeah, it's it's corporate in that sense, but. You know, they're not basing it and saying, hey, we we like this company because they're doing, you know, cybersecurity for burn wealth. They're saying. They have a major government contract that goes out X amount of years, and they absolutely have to be in that building. To address the government and this type of, you know, military base or whatever. So I think, I think there's a a lot more specialization than maybe they.
Yeah, I would also say that um Boyd Waterston. Has uh great expertise in the government, you know, building leasing business. They're by far the largest. Landlord, they said uh to the US government, private landlord. So they have seen these other uh deals, you know, that they've had to pass up on because they aren't actually the government doing the um leasing. But they, you know, they they have the expertise in this area that I think gives this a lot of credibility as opposed to just somebody. Starting from fresh, you know, without experience like they have. So I personally find it quite attractive, but I can understand um Anthony's, you know. Made some, some very good points, and there is risk in this fund that aren't in the other funds. So. I could see just um. You know, putting in for the delayed investment in the funds that we're currently in as well, if that's what the board prefers. But this would have a little bit higher return expectation and we'll put our money to work right away rather than having to wait. And I I just would like to see some money come up, coming out of these bond funds, which while they're very safe, they can lose money. They're safe in credit terms, but they'll lose money if rates go up, you know, and this fund I don't think will. You know, for one thing, it's not going to really be mark to market very much. So we're not going to see a lot of fluctuation in the value from quarter to quarter. You'll just see income mostly, unless they have an adverse event. So my my uh feeling is I I would go for this, but uh if um, you know, maybe. Structure this as a boat on whether uh to do this or to do the other. Um, you know, a million each to government, the government and the state funds, I guess.
John Oliver, you started the the meeting by saying you, we have four options. Yeah, so the first one was GSA and the state. To wait till next year.
Yeah, so so yeah, sorry, just to be clear, I, one of the options was to say, let's reduce our exposure. And if, and in the GSA, for example, and add to this fund if we didn't want to change the band. But, you know, the second option I was saying was to change the band. So, you know, that that's kind of two of them. And then, you know, the third op, the third option was to do. The GSA and the state fund, or the fourth was to do this fund. So, you know, one of them, we kind of. Already, or I guess two of them, we eliminated the first two, right? Because we said we didn't want to reduce from the other assets and move to. This fund, and then we we voted to, or you all voted to raise the ban. Which I think, you know, was was my recommendation that I thought was optimal as well, that that Jim made to to do this. Because it doesn't really impact necessarily anything else in terms of the the structure of the portfolio, but gives us a little more flexibility in this space. And then the last two were, you know, really where the, with decision is now, do we decide on the GSA and state fund? You know, and I and I guess my my other comment on that is, you know, we should really forget about thinking about allocating to them if we don't do that tonight. Because, you know, it's, I don't think, I don't, I don't think, you know, I don't think in twenty twenty-three, there would probably be some different options by the time. We could get in or something, you know, I mean, I guess we could queue up next quarter for them, but, you know, by that point, it's. You know, there there's probably not as much point. There'll be other attractive assets, I would think, you know, that far out. And then, um, you know, this fourth one is to is to go into this fund.
So what's your recommendation, John Oliver?
Yeah, I mean, my my recommendation, I think this fund provides more diversification for the portfolio. It gives us a chance to reduce. You know, what I think, you know, barring some crazy market self, which could happen, but I also think this provides us kind of some equal protection in that. Uh, you know, fills an immediate need of taking the most risky assets out of, you know, what I would say are highly. Appreciate, a highly appreciated asset class or a pretty rich asset class with low returns. And allows us into something, you know, pretty quickly. And even if they they have a delay in the ramp up and let's say it's, you know. Six and and it doesn't go great for the first time period, I would take six any day over what I think the long only bond market is. So, you know, my recommendation would be to do the the this fund that was presented on. But, you know, I I hear, I hear the the concerns and it's, you know, something that's a little unique and indifferent, even though uh, you know.
Yeah.
You know.
So the way I look at it, but Jim, you're obviously the chairman, um, you know, we could vote on either uh, doing nothing. Or putting two million into this new fund or putting a million each in the government and state funds.
Where would we take the money from is my question.
Uh, I I would just, you know, my recommendation would be, I would take, you know, just to keep the fund structure somewhat balanced. I would take probably a million from the active manager and a million from um, the the passive index. And that way you still, you know, restructurally or unchanging kind of the core fix, core, for lack of a better term, core fixed income. Diversification between active and and beta or passive exposure. Um, but, you know, I it it's, you know, either or you could do, you could do two from one. And two from the other.
So a million each from Western.
Yeah, right, million from Western and a million from Vanguard. I think that's the most logical. Um, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't really shift our active versus versus uh beta risk in the portfolio to watch.
Well, then Jim, uh, maybe you can summarize heading a resolution we could vote on.
Yeah, well, I would, I would move to um, invest two million in in the new fund. And if it doesn't pass, then I would move to um the second motion. I think that would be probably a logical way to proceed. Is that okay with you, Jim?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so I'll make that motion that we invest two million in the uh Boyd Waterston diversified government REIT.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion seconded, uh further discussion on it. Anthony, did you have any more comments or feelings?
No, no.
Okay, well, if we're ready to vote, uh, I will vote affirmative of favor, aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Abstained, passes unanimously. Thank you, Jim, for your expertise.
What was the dollar amount? I'm sorry, I had to take a phone call.
Two million.
Two million, okay, thanks.
Great.
And I guess, John Oliver, we didn't have anything else on the agenda.
No, yeah, and I and I, you know, I I, you know, would never like to have a, you know, sorry, Anthony, to have a meeting that was so. You know, quickly noticed, but I just, you know, I wanted to make sure if we decided one way or the other, we just, at at least I I I was just out there. For due diligence with them when we, when they were, you know, talking about the commitments, the fund, and and I said, you know, this is probably. A good opportunity to to have this, uh, you know, and whether we did it or not, fine, but, you know, to not, to not present it, you know. I wouldn't be doing my job really for you all.
So, and I do understand this helps. You're going to make the paperwork submissions tomorrow? Is that part of this?
No, we'll shred, we'll shred the GSA and we're we're shred those.
So after this meeting, um Boyd Waterston is waiting for a decision, so I am going to email them and let them know to shred the paperwork for the GSA and the state. And they will prepare the new paperwork and I will send it over to Maria to sign by the thirteenth.
Okay, thank you, Lindsay.
Of course.
Great.
Okay, well, if there's no further business, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Jim, how about you? Patrick, second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous.
Happy holidays.
Take care.
Thanksgiving. Thanks for, you know, the. Thanksgiving. Thanks for, you know, the opportunity.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Sign it off. Bye, Lindsay.